I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Present.
Commissioner Pont?
Here.
Commissioner Monet?
Here.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address items that are not on the agenda. And because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussion or take action on matters not described on the agenda. Please observe the time limit of four minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address this during the public forum? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent items. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action, for extended discussion, or for public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull 4.3.
Okay, 4.3 is pulled.
And I'd like to pull 4.4, if I could, please.
Okay, 4.3 and 4.4 are pulled from the consent agenda. Is there any member of the public who wishes to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion for... Well, I should pull the minutes for the meeting of June 19th. So we can leave the minutes for June 5th on the consent agenda. And then we would have that part of 4.1 and 4.2 available for a motion. Do I hear one?
So moved. Move 4.1A, I suppose, and 4.2.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes. I asked to pull the minutes for June 19th because I was not present and can't vote on that. Is there any discussion on those minutes?
Move the minutes for June 19th?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
So that brings us to item 4.3.
For clarity, I think we would like to call Vice Chair Hardy to allow him to abstain.
Oh, yeah.
I will call... Roll call again. Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Abstain. Thank you, Ms. Camaro. Item 4.3, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair... Vice Chair Hardy and commission members of the public. The project before the commission this evening is a design review exemption to construct a 111-square-foot addition to an existing 2,561-square-foot home at 1650 Chardinay Way in the low-density residential district. The project is essentially proposing a number of small modifications to the side and rear of the building in order to accommodate what's primarily an interior remodel. And the proposed expansion of floor area is below the allowable square footage.
That probably answers my question. My question was that it said that under the background that the current development is 2,561, and then when you're doing the FAR, it says... Excuse me. Oh, right. Wait a second. I'm sorry. So you did add the 111 feet into... I mean, did you add... Is it exempted, or is it added in there, or what? Because...
That's a good question. I'm seeing the math here that's not identified.
2,561 is on the... There. And then the living area with those... With the 200 square foot leaves the FAR thing, but if you... Where's the 111 square feet?
That is an excellent catch, and I believe that the...
And that puts it over. Well, I don't know if it puts it over. It becomes 2,872 in that case, so...
We'll just confirm that it's below?
Is it still... Yeah, maybe it is.
We're confirming right now.
Yeah, I don't know if it is or not, but...
It's still under.
Okay.
That's .302.
Okay.
So it is very slightly under, but it is under the floor area ratio allowed.
Very slightly, okay.
And nice catch, and I apologize for the incomplete analysis there.
That satisfies your question, Bobby?
I just didn't understand, and I wanted to be clarified. Otherwise, I don't have a problem. If it's still under FAR, I don't have a problem with it.
Well, the item having been pulled, I will open the public hearing and invite the applicant to speak if the applicant is present while noting that the question has been satisfied, and it may be that the less said, the better. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
I'm the applicant. I'm just trying to be quiet.
You're welcome. Is there anything else to discuss, commissioners? I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved. Moved that we accept staff recommendation.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
That brings us to item 4.4. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hardy. So the proposed signage under this item includes two signs on the building's primary frontage and two on the building's secondary frontage, which are basically the sides of chimneys on the north and south end. The main identification sign on the building's primary frontage reads Yao Family Wines, and it's approximately 48 square feet in size. It consists of pin-mounted red acrylic letters that would be illuminated by exterior lights affixed to the building. The second sign on the building's primary frontage is located near the front door and also reads Yao Family Wines and Yao Ming proprietor with an additional symbol in Chinese lettering that states Yao Ming's name in Chinese. The sign is 12 square feet and consists of pin-mounted backlit aluminum lettering, creating a halo-illuminated effect. The two signs on the chimneys on the north and south end also read Yao Family Wines and are 10 square feet in size and also consist of pin-mounted red acrylic letters. These signs would not be illuminated. As far as the illumination of the sign near the front door, while the light source is technically inside, which our code does prohibit internally illuminated signs, the prohibition of internally illuminated signs is typically to prevent glowing boxes and glowing faces of signs that you'd see like in a gas station or a fast-food restaurant. Our code isn't up to technology as far as signs go. So while technically the light source is inside, the effect is a halo illumination, which the planning commission has supported in the past. There are examples of it around town. One that's similar to this, very close, is the Y-Down, that it's a similar construction. I understand there may be some concerns about the brightness. So 100-watt light bulb is 1,600 lumens. A 75-watt light bulb is 1,100 lumens. This proposed sign would be 519, so less than half of a 75-watt light bulb. And just for clarification as well, the only signs that would be illuminated on that particular sign near the front door is just Yao Family Wines. The rest of the sign is too small to be illuminated anyway. So that's that.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the commission?
I've got a couple, if you would please. So that lumens is the sum total of the sign, not each LED?
I'll defer that to the applicant to clarify.
Okay. Okay. And so the sign, as designed, technically doesn't meet our current standards. Is that right?
While the prohibition of internally illuminated signs is prohibited in the sign code, however, I believe the intent of that is for glowing boxes and glowing faces.
It's hard to say what the intent is 20-plus years later.
Correct. I just... Based on other sign codes that you read that prohibit it, that's what they specify they're trying to prohibit. And so I don't know what the precedent was. There's examples all over town of halo illumination.
The way the current sign is designed, the lights are inside a closed box. I don't know if Y-Downs are inside a closed box or if the box is open on the backside.
No, it's... The box is actually each letter. So each letter...
Yes, yes, yes. Each letter is a closed surface, if you will, then. It seems to me that, reading the staff report, you quoted a section of the code that also calls for us to review hours of operation. Do we have any idea when the signs would go on and off?
Our code states that signs for businesses are not to be illuminated when the business is closed.
So this would be till 10:00?
Correct.
Because that's the current closing time for this current business. Okay. All right. My only other question has to do with the current signs on the building. I noticed that some of the signs we're talking about, some of those spaces are already occupied by signs where there was no sign there before. Do we have any sorts of rules, regulations about temporary signage?
We do have rules regarding temporary signage. It's typically for an event or a sale or something like that, and I believe, yeah, grand openings, I believe it's two or three weeks, twice a year they're allowed to be up.
So it wouldn't cover the current signage on the building at all?
That's correct.
So everything on the current building is not within our code?
It's unpermitted.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question. I was particularly interested in the secondary frontage and the signs that are to be put on the... Or the applicant has asked to be put on the chimney. And it's my understanding the chimney is in the center of the building. Is that correct?
There's multiple. I know there's one... There may be one in the center and then one on the south end and one on the north end. So there are at least two, perhaps three.
Which chimneys... Of the chimneys are the ones that the second... That propose these additional signs?
Yeah, so on the very north, and then, yeah, you're correct, in the middle. Wait. No, on the ends.
There's sort of a sketch drawing.
Yeah, on the... It's on page 97, shows the location.
Time to time to time.
Yeah, one of them faces Gots, and then one of them basically faces south.
Okay. I'm sorry. So one of them... Okay, so the one of them, this secondary frontage sign, is above the trash area, and the other secondary frontage sign is above the other...
Basically, the vacant lot.
The vacant lot, okay. These are sort of the... I looked at the... I looked at the code, because I'm very curious about signage, secondary signage, that's sort of above... Looming above buildings. And I looked around town to see if there was any other signage that appeared to be on chimneys that were above roof lines of buildings. I couldn't find one. And the secondary frontage, by our code definition, 17.148.010, is... The secondary frontage means the sides of a building. I don't think a fireplace that rises above the roof line is a side of a building. And I'd be curious as to staff's thoughts about that.
I think that's a valid opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Did you... Oh, we can't... We're not talking to each other yet.
Well, I want to be sure we've finished questions of staff first, please. Are there any other questions for staff? Did you have a question then for David?
Yes. I was just wondering if... But, yeah, I can ask it later when we're in discussion, yeah.
I'll open the public hearing then and invite the applicant to speak.
Hi, I'm Jay Bemke, representing the owner of the property.
Welcome back.
Yeah, thanks for having me up. We have had a difficult time working on the signage with this property, primarily because the property is decorated, has this landscaping of these beautiful olive trees that surround the perimeter of the property. And as a result, almost all of the normal places that you could place a sign on the building are not visible from the street or by anybody at all. And so we have been... You know, we've been operating the tasting room for two years now, and it has taken all this time to try and come up with any sensible signage plan. The signs that are up there were put up as temporary signs simply to test various... Certain concepts that we had. And then this process has gone on for so long, and I will take my part of the blame in it. I would take a run at it for a while and get no good ideas and take a break and come back. Anyway, we have the plan that we would like to propose. The sign on the front that is illuminated, the intent there is only to generate a halo effect around the letters that say Yao Family Wines. The box itself will be made of aluminum. It is not transparent. The light source inside will not create a glowing effect anywhere except behind the letters. Essentially, those letters are attached to a piece of clear plastic acrylic, and then the aluminum box is cut in the shape of that letter, and it all fits together. And the... There'll only be one light in the box, so the 500 lumens is all there will be. It's just intended in... When it's dark outside, to create a halo effect around those letters. That's... I thought about that. The signs on the chimneys, frankly, we got that idea from the Bellows. They had, I believe, made a proposal to do something similar in the past, and so that seemed like an idea that we should try to duplicate. If we lower the signs, they just... It's not worth putting them up. There's plenty of activity going on in Gots from the north. We're trying to get a sign that you can see. Even with the signings that we've proposed on the front, people coming from north to south, passing Gots, will not see any of those signs because they're covered by the olive trees. We have discussed plans where we take out all the olive trees, but we'd really prefer to keep them. And so what we wanted to do is put a sign on the chimney where at least it is visible from the street, even though it's not the best place for the sign. On the south side, there's a vacant lot. Once again, there's some landscaping there, and we are trying to put a sign up that people might notice as they drive up.
So the wall, if you're coming from south of town, there's no place on the wall to put it either? Is that what you're saying? That the landscaping...
Well, from the south, the olive trees don't completely wrap around. We actually have a gap on the south side where you can actually see the building briefly. And so you would be able to see the principal sign, the large 48-square-foot sign, of when you're driving from that direction. The sign on the front door, frankly, is only visible if you turn into the parking lot and walk up to the building. And my goal there was simply that people could be confident that they had arrived at the place that they were trying to get to. The other signs are not visible from that spot.
Certainly, they are not.
The larger signs, obviously... The larger sign on the front is not visible when you get to the parking lot, because the building is up above you, so you can't really read it. And so I wanted to have a sign on the front door that would allow you to know that you'd come to Yao Family Wines if that's what you were trying to get to. The Bellows had a sign approved in the exact same location and basically the exact same configuration that we are trying to do here. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Exact same location, meaning the large sign? The small sign? The chimney signs?
Okay, I'll be more precise. The front door sign?
Yes.
Is in the same location that the Bellows had a front door sign of similar construction, a box with a light in it.
But just that one.
And then the larger sign, the 48-foot sign, is in the same place that they have a sign. Currently, we just put a piece of plastic over their sign. We have to take it off and strip it off the concrete to put ours on.
So essentially, you want to add a couple of signs, is the bottom line, to what was previously on the building?
Well, there were two signs on the front.
Right.
Two signs on the front.
Right.
The Bellows had applied. I have a copy of the application. I don't know what happened to it. Four signs on the secondary frontage that are very similar to what we were proposing here, to put a sign on the chimney on the north and the south.
Didn't happen. So you're adding a pair of signs.
Correct.
And so the 500 watts is total for the small sign in the front? 35 watts per...
Lumens. 30... Sorry, it's...
35 lumens, yeah, per...
Backup.
Per letter?
No, no, no. There will only be one light in the box.
In the whole...
And the box, then, it infuses the... All of the letters. Are we talking about the same project?
Your design appears to indicate that each letter is independently lit.
Okay. Well, I'm afraid Aaron confused me when he gave his presentation. Aaron, which diagram are they looking at?
Each letter is independently lit.
Okay, well, then, this whole discussion about the light in the box that you started off really got me confused. There is no light in the box. Aaron made it very clear, we can't have lights in boxes. And so there is no light in the box. That was my original proposal that Aaron rejected. The lights are attached to the back of the letters. The letters are on pins, and the LEDs are on the back.
I'm looking at the design on... It's an unnumbered page. It appears by the design that each letter is a closed box, and each letter has a light. You're telling me now that isn't correct?
Can we get this up on the screen? Is that possible?
So I'm trying to figure out what the design is.
Unfortunately, we're having technical difficulties with the TV and the projection from the computer, therefore, we're unable to put this up on the screen.
That diagram was taken from a manufacturer. That is not correct. No, the...
It's kind of difficult for us to vote on something when we don't know what we're voting on.
I agree. That was a piece of clip art that shouldn't have made it. The intent of the sign is that the letters are solid metal, cut-out letters, mounted on pins. They do not have an interior. They are not as illustrated in that sample of the R. They're simply a flat piece of metal with LEDs glued on the inside of the side that faces...
Glued to the backside of the cut-out piece of metal?
Yes.
Okay. So each letter has an LED attached to it?
Correct.
Not inside a clear plexiglass box?
Correct.
Correct. How many lumens for each LED? For each LED?
Yeah.
Well, we haven't built it and tested it. If it's way too bright, we will remove several of the LEDs. That's not what I had in mind.
Once again, it's difficult to vote on something if we do not know what we're voting on.
Yeah.
We do not know how bright it is. We do not know how it's constructed. We do not know how far it'll stick out. Apparently, I'm not sure what it'll look like. It makes it difficult to come to a decision when we don't know what we've got. I mean, if each one is 500...
Yep. Fair enough. All right.
That's...
I'll call foul and withdraw my application at this point.
That's 14 times 500.
Yeah.
That's rather bright.
Let's continue it.
We can continue it. I can submit new plans for your next meeting.
Is this a one-off custom fabrication then, Jay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's unique.
Not out of the box, so to speak.
It's unique. Not out of the box. Very good.
Yes, yes. We've spent months trying to find vendors. The issue about the pin-mounted lights with the LEDs in the back, it turns out it's very hard to find manufacturers for that. I understand this is what you... Your code requires. The Bello sign originally was more like the Y-Down sign, in which there's a light in a box, and it goes out through the acrylic letters. Anyway, we have abandoned that idea. We've found a vendor that can do this, and I agree, we don't want it to be too bright. The idea is it's supposed to be a soft glow, and we may not need LEDs behind each letter to get the effect that we're looking for. It's almost... We'd almost have to mock it up and try it in a dark room to get the right idea.
Mr. Bemke, it's interesting. We just approved a sign a couple of months ago for the Charter Oak across the street.
Yep.
You might want to see who the constructor was for that, because I think it's the same, essentially, plan. Letters that are raised off of a back with lighting behind them.
Yes, the Charter Oak sign would be easy to do because the products that are easily available handle bigger letters. We're trying to do it on smaller, six-inch letters. And it's finding people who make sort of miniature LEDs that has been the trouble. We do have a supplier now. And so it'd be very easy to submit a updated diagram that shows exactly what we're trying to do.
As part of your continuance, I'm very... I have a question on the two pictures prior to... You know, similar to my prior question about the chimneys. The last picture, which I wish we could put up, it's called Sign B. I don't see any olive trees in the trash area that would block the signage from being lowered down on that building. That's the last picture. There's a little roof area, I don't know, for the trash or for whatever, and there's an exit there. There's a fire alarm attached to the outside of the building, but it sure seems like there's no vegetation that would block your ability to have a sign on the building beneath the roof line. Is that... Am I looking at that picture incorrectly?
No, I can't disagree with your point. The sign could be moved lower.
Okay.
We were just trying for maximum visibility.
Got it.
Because this chimney is... It's located... It's not really in the middle of the building. It's toward the backside of the building, and the Gots parking lot is very busy during the day.
No, I get that. But you could lower it. It could still even be sort of attached to the chimney aspect of the building, just not above the roof line. The other one is on the south-facing one, where there's some... A couple of those Italian cypress trees. And I guess you also have some growing vines on the side of the building. But it seems like also there, you could attach it to the building itself. There's a space between that and the other lot, and you could just scrape away some of those vines and be able to also create a sign that was beneath the roof line, which to me... I mean, there's the letter and the intent. It seems to me the intent is to not have sort of billboard-y signs sort of attached to the building rather than attached to protruences above the building. So anyway, as you... As we continue this?
Okay.
Maybe you could, you know, work with staff. It's just a suggestion.
I appreciate the suggestion.
I have a comment on that. I read the ordinance today, too, just before I came in, and what you're saying is correct, but I didn't see anything there. They have a list of things that are not allowed, and there was nothing in that list of things that were forbidden about going above the roof line. So how does the planning department look at that? I mean, I'd just like to know what you're thinking.
So I would identify under 17.148.030, signs prohibited. Number 11...
Number 11 is roof signs. Then you look at the definition of that. It's not 100% clear, but in this situation, I do feel that that would apply, and it specifically precludes a sign placed upon, projecting from or above the ridge of a roof, or above the roof itself if there is no ridge. There is no ridge on this building. Those signs do project above the roof, and therefore are prohibited.
Well, I missed that when I read it. Thank you. Yeah.
That seems like an easy modification to make.
Yes, I mean, I think any change that brings a signage into better conformance with the ordinance but continues to provide real visibility is a good thing. I personally want to be sure that we don't make it too difficult for applicants to accomplish what needs to be accomplished with signage while still respecting the policies that we've adopted. More particularly, some of these locations south of the bridge, as people used to say quite regularly, have been consistently difficult over decades as retail locations, in part, I think, because on the approach to town, people don't recognize or identify what the business is until it's effectively too late to enter the parking area. In some cases, they have a hard time even figuring out how to enter the parking area. So I think this project has a location where thoughtful attention to signage is probably quite important.
Maybe this is, oh, go ahead.
No, that's it.
Maybe this would be an example of an unintended positive consequence of the traffic. In town, people are slowed down when they're before, to some extent.
There's plenty of time if you can figure out how to pick the left turn.
It's an ill wind that blows no one any good.
That is 25 mile an hour.
Is this, so if the applicants ask for a continuance to a date certain, I presume, perhaps we should ask staff what you're contemplating on?
So I would just say the options before the commission are to act on it, conditioning it, or to continue in, we would say, a date certain, probably to, or, we were going to rec, yeah. So these signs are not decided at hearing, public hearings, so continuance to a date certain or uncertain is less important, because it doesn't affect the public hearing.
Oh, because it's by consent?
Oh, right.
Well, then, what do we need to do as a commission to accede to the applicant's request?
Vote to continue providing the direction that you did, to lower the height of the chimney signs, or eliminate them, whatever the direction is, and ask for accurate details on the illumination.
That sounds good. So I would like to ask for this matter to be continued with two suggestions. One is a lowering of the sign to be in compliance with our code, the secondary signs, and the second to give us an accurate schema of the lighted sign in the front.
Second?
It's a motion and a second. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you for your helpful suggestions.
Thank you for your open mind.
That brings us then to item 5.1, which, if I understand it correctly, requires no action as it is a continued item from June 19th, continued to the July 17th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Is there an action for the commission here?
No, no action. We would just suggest that you open the public hearing in case anyone is here who wishes to speak on the public.
So it was noticed for this meeting, and that's why it's on the agenda. Accordingly, item 5.1 is a request by Brian Moore on behalf of Verizon Wireless for adoption of a resolution granting design review approval in order to place a 12-foot-high addition on an existing PG&E tower to accommodate six new panel antennas and associated equipment on the property located near the 1600 block of Grayson Avenue in the A-20 zoning district. I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. This item is continued to July 17th. Which brings us then to, where are my 5.1? 6.1. Review of Planning Commission Bylaws in Light of Recent Changes to the City Council's Standards of Conduct and Rules of Procedure for the Conduct of Council Meetings.
Noah, is this one yours?
It is, sir. Thank you, Vice Chair Hardy. As identified in the staff report and the agenda title, the item before you is proposed modifications to the bylaws which govern the process by which the planning commission operates. Some of these modifications are motivated by changes that the council adopted to all boards and commissions' protocols, primarily expanding the public comment period from three to four minutes, and adopting Rosenberg's Rules of Order in place of Roberts' Rules of Order. The draft changes have been identified or have been incorporated into the document before the commission, with the exception of the reference to Rosenberg's and Rule 27. Commissioner Pont pointed that out to me as a miss earlier this afternoon, or possibly on Friday, and I appreciate that. And so the Rule 27 doesn't identify Rosenberg's rules as it should. Separately, staff is recommending some additional minor changes to Rule 21, which would reorder some of the elements in Rule 21, which governs the process of the meetings. First recommended change is to move the acknowledgement and/or reading of written testimony up to become part of the staff report. That's typically when staff does it, and it's, from the staff perspective, one of the most appropriate times to voice written comments or phone call comments that were received by staff after the publication of the staff report. So it generally flows better if staff identifies those, points out when they're on the dais for the commission to read, and then also staff generally will reiterate what the comments said to help the commission understand the comments received. Secondarily, staff is recommending that the order of, when the commission asks questions of staff for clarification, and the presentation of the project by the applicants be switched to allow staff to present and acknowledge written communications, the applicant to present, and then the commission to switch to questions prior to opening the public hearing. In staff's experience, oftentimes, the commission may have questions that are clarified in the applicant's presentations, or sometimes it generates a discussion amongst the commissioners, which may be more broadly informed after the applicants have a chance to speak. So those are two recommended changes. Other than that, we will take the bylaws to the commission, I'm sorry, to the city council for adoption, should the commission support the changes as identified. Happy to discuss or answer any questions.
Any questions for the director?
About what you've just said, or questions at all about any of this?
Any of it.
Yeah, I have some. Okay. My first one is on page 118, Rule 24, at the end of it. Perhaps you can help me understand it a little better. It says, okay, "A tie vote or a deadlock constitutes a denial unless the applicant requests a continuance of the item to a subsequent meeting at which a quorum is present prior to a vote to deny the item." So does that mean that before the vote is taken, the applicant needs to say, "In case this doesn't pass, I want to make it, you know, I want to continue it?" Or, or am I, you know, this doesn't make sense to me.
I think it's trying to say, prior to the vote, the applicant may request a continuance.
But the, I infer from what it does say that if the applicant doesn't say they want a continuance before the vote, that they can't have it. But how will they know if they want a continuance until?
I understand. It could be more clear.
Okay, but that's what it means? Okay, all right.
They can't request a continuance after, well, it's my understanding they can't request a continuance after there's a vote.
No, because the vote is the vote. It seems to me that we should make this clear. So should we push it back for?
I'm pretty sure if we put a period in here and cross out unless, we can fix this. If that reads, "A tie vote or deadlock constitutes a denial," period, cross out unless, start with a capital T. "The applicant may request a continuance of the item to a subsequent meeting."
Before the vote is taken.
What says prior to?
You can only request.
So maybe we should switch the?
Switch the order of the sentences.
I think it should be clear that she can only request a continuance if she does so before the vote.
The only way you can get a redo, both in Roberts and Rosenberg's, is if a member of the voting majority asks for reconsideration.
That's right.
So, I mean, that's it.
And that's my second question, on page 158. Oh, my bad.
Well, it's not your bad, but I would like to interrupt, just so that we can, so that I can weigh in here, at least with my thoughts on 24. In my experience, the real process problem for the applicant is that unless the request for a continuance is made before the public hearing is closed, and thus before the commission or whatever the body is enters into its discussion, which is often the point at which the applicant can see clearly for the first time the possibility of a tie vote, the applicant is not necessarily recognized, nor do the ordinary sort of procedures require the chair give the applicant an opportunity to speak. So I'm all in favor of providing that opportunity, and I think John's suggestion is the right way to sort of clean it up, but I think what it should say to be clear is that unless the applicant requests a continuance of the item to a subsequent meeting at which a quorum is present prior to any vote being taken, doesn't vote to deny, vote to approve, doesn't matter what the motion is, any vote that ends in a tie is fatal, and what the applicant needs is the opportunity to make the request for a continuance and for that request to be granted. Because one possibility is the applicant comes forward, is recognized, makes the request, and the vote's 4-0, or?
3-0.
2-2, not to grant the request, right? And then you go on to the motion, and now, so some, and I'm, something more precise will, in the future, when people no longer remember this discussion, really be helpful. And I think it's just that, I think we need to be clear, two things, that on a matter of procedure, the chair should give the applicant an opportunity to speak after the close of the public hearing and before any votes taken. And secondly, that in this case, to be effective, the continuance has to be granted, or the request for a continuance has to be granted before a motion to approve or deny is made.
So adding to this, I think Commissioner Pont's suggestions will address that. I think if we put a period after denial, cross off unless, and add may, it'll read the applicant, or the, hey, the applicant may request a continuance of the item to a subsequent meeting at which a quorum is present prior to a vote, and then cross off the, to deny the item, as you suggested. And then I do agree, a tie or deadlock vote constitutes a denial being put after that.
If I can add one more thing, Lester, you brought up a tie. There's also a way to have a non-majority vote and not have a tie, because it requires, a positive vote requires a majority of the quorum present, correct?
Correct.
If you have four members, that means you need three votes in favor.
Correct.
You could have two votes in favor, one vote against, one abstention, and it fails.
Also true.
So we need to be clear on that.
I think it would allow it, because getting rid of the, to deny an item would basically just say that the applicant has a right to request a continuance.
Okay. That's exciting. That means I could abstain in the future and have more, and say, "I didn't vote against it." For those watching at home or may reviewing the video evidence, I'm making a joke.
Future Senator Knudsen.
That's exactly, it's going to come back to bite me.
You're becoming a politician.
Yeah, no jokes in political life are allowed. None, zero.
You were an innocent fellow when you came in. I know you're becoming a politician.
Yeah, terrible.
Okay, I had a couple of other things.
Back to Bobby.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Rule number 27 was already caught by John, and I guess, Rule number 30, Rule number 29 says, "Any rule of these bylaws may be altered, amended, or repealed by a majority vote of the commission, except that such alteration, amendment, or appeal shall not affect any pending matter." And then Rule 30 says, "Any rule of these bylaws may be temporarily suspended by unanimous consent of the commission." Is that also not to be affecting a pending matter, or is it not?
I think that would allow, it's allowing intentional flexibility for an unforeseen circumstance where a pending matter is affected in a way that the commission doesn't believe it should be by these bylaws.
Well, it, I mean, to me, it means that you can't suspend these rules as in response to a particular item, that it has to be a more general thing, and I'm wondering why that language was left off of them.
No, it's two separate things, Bobby. One is a more general, universal thing. 29 is a more general approach. 30 is a specific, issue-oriented approach. If we get an issue that, say, somebody comes up with a point of order, I want to suspend whatever rule they carried a motion to suspend for this item, that falls under 30.
And staff supports that interpretation because of the language temporarily. So basically, 30 allows a temporary pause or, as it says, suspension of one of these bylaws, whereas 29 is a permanent amendment or alteration or repeal intended to not be in response to a specific item, but a broader discussion like we're having now.
Let's say we get a hot item, and somebody wants to talk 10 minutes, and everybody wants to talk 10 minutes, and we say as a group, okay, each person gets 10 minutes rather than four minutes. That's a suspension under 30.
All right, thank you, thanks. And I had one more, if that's all right. Oh, let's see, on page 158, in the Rosenberg thing, it talks about, it talks about being able to bring, you were talking about it, John, bring up, make a change, bring, you know, make a challenge, not a challenge, but bring up an issue again if one of the, if one of the people who, if the person who brings it up is one of the people who voted against it, but they, but they want to come again. Well, let's look at the page, and I guess I should go there. Pardon?
You're talking about a motion for reconsideration.
That's correct. So I'm wondering, it says that you, okay, so let's say you do it for the next meeting, I mean, you do it at the meeting, and you agree to have that happen. Isn't that in conflict with the Brown Act that says anything that you discuss for a vote has to be noticed properly? So does the state law trump those Rosenberg rules?
If there's a vote to reconsider, it gets put on a future agenda and brought back. If there's a vote to reconsider, it gets put on a future agenda and brought back.
But it says it could be on, it could be on that same night, too.
You can vote to reconsider.
Yeah, but there's no violation of the Brown Act. If you vote to reconsider the same night you've taken your action, that item's on the agenda.
It's already on there for that, but, okay.
And if you do it at the next meeting, then you can act on the motion to reconsider, but you can't act on the matter.
Oh, okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay, so then it needs to be scheduled for something? Okay, got it. All right, thank you for that clarification. And then I, 115, what is that?
115?
Do you have something on there? Oh, yeah, I was just going to suggest, it says, "Notice that such meeting shall be given in accordance with state law." I was wondering if anyone else on the commission would be interested in having our notices done the way the city council is noticing 10 days before the meeting as opposed to, you know, four days before the meeting. I didn't know if any of you would think that would be a good idea. I think it would be a good idea, especially for some issues that I know you're gonna roll your, I guess it's hard.
Staff agrees with that, and it's actually a part of a department report.
Oh, okay, so anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up, all right? All right? And that's all I had on that, yeah, thank you.
Anyone else on this agenda item?
I just want to mention one thing. I'm very, very happy that the city council decided to eliminate the three motions open on the floor at one time before you do anything else. And their set of modifications of these rules, they eliminated that.
It's fascinating to me that this was passed over two years ago by the prior council. This, yes, this is not, this is stale, and it's, I'm not casting aspersions on staff or anyone else, it's just surprising. And this isn't a mandate from the current council, this is a mandate from the prior council, a mandate from beyond the grave, so to speak.
The ghosts.
Yeah, the ghosts of the past are still present. It's just a, it's just a thought, not a, not that anything means for us.
I think someone once said, "The rules of pleading shall rule us from the grave," but I, I wanted to clarify with the director that these rules are going to the council for action?
The council technically has to adopt the planning commission bylaws after you vote to approve them.
Okay, so then, that's what I thought I understood from your report, but then, when I come back to Rule 29, it appears as though the council has to approve them, but we then, by majority vote, can alter, amend, or repeal them. So, if the council adopts these, then we get to take it away from them if we wish?
It seems Rule 29 needs further clarifying language.
I don't know, I was thinking, I liked it the way it is. But I'll leave that to your sound discretion.
And I will like to point out one other recommendation that Commissioner Pont voiced regarding Rule 32, which would be, rather than reference a specific city council resolution by which these are adopted, just, actually, it does say, "or any amended" there, too, but take that out and just say, basically, "subject to city council modification." So that way, if they change their rules, we don't have to continually update these.
That seems fair. I'd also say that in terms of 29, I mean, you know, that's sort of an unusual suspension. I suppose we could suspend it over and over and over again, but then at that point, council would probably direct us never to do that again, so.
Well, now you're talking about Rule 30. I don't see a problem with Rule 30. Rule 30 makes sense to me. Rule 29, it seems to be in conflict with the council authority.
Well, but I, am I reading 29 incorrectly? That as long as it's not over, oh, I suppose it is semi-permanent.
Isn't this about...
Well, it says we can alter, amend, or repeal by majority vote.
Let's go back to Roberts. Just kidding. That's another joke.
But this is not, Rosenberg, this is, but I don't get the difference between 33 and 35. Can you help me with that, Chair, Mr. Chair? I mean, obviously, one is talking about established laws, and the other is not, but is that the only difference? Are they redundant, or what? The law one makes, but I don't understand what the difference is.
It's essentially procedure versus law.
Oh, okay, all right.
It basically says if somebody makes a procedural mistake on the dais, it doesn't obviate the vote that happened.
Okay, so...
It's kind of a get out of jail free card, is what it is.
Right, so I mean, it's all about not getting sued, I mean, that's what seemed to me.
Well, as it should be. I mean, minor issues should not invalidate the decisions we make on behalf of the community.
I guess, yeah. Arguably, arguably.
If it's major, sure, but if it's a minor...
Depends, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to answer your question, it seems to me the key difference is in the first phrase in Rule 35. "So long as," I could reword that, "there is compliance with all established laws and regulations." That's the part that Rule 33 doesn't have.
Should we change it to "so long as"? It makes more sense.
I'm not trying to edit it. I mean, you don't, you really don't want to turn me loose that way.
Vice Chair Hardy is a attorney who, he understands this stuff, so.
And he can articulate it very clearly.
And everybody writes legal a little bit differently, so.
Some more clearly than others, that's what I was thinking.
So, staff will...
Yes, I would love to entertain a motion, but please, I'm interrupting.
Staff was planning on making the modifications, bringing it back to the commission on consent likely to ensure compliance, and then you could, this does require a motion and a vote, but upon final editing.
We'll look forward to seeing it come back, then.
Good job. I like the changes, I liked all of them.
A step forward. So, I believe this brings us now to Item 6.2 nomination and election of a new planning commission chair and vice chair, and designation of the commission secretary.
Correct, so, as the bylaws identify, the first meeting in July is recommended to, or is identified as the meeting date by which the chair and vice chair are selected, and designation of the secretary, which is typically the planning director. Obviously, I'm up for that nomination, I think that's probably the easiest one to take off the agenda there, but we do, we do only have four standing members of the commission, as you're aware, and we do not have any pending applications, so given that, staff does find it appropriate to vote for chair and vice chair tonight, and then any new commissioner who gets appointed can, can join the body as they are appointed to it.
Well, I would like to nominate Lester to be chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Lester, you've done a fantastic job as vice chair, and I think you'll be a wonderful chairman, and I'd like to have you nominated by acclaim, if that's possible.
By what?
Acclamation. Or do we need to vote? Okay, we need to vote.
We should take a roll call, I think. Thank you, I wasn't really fishing for compliments, but thank you.
He might vote no, you never know.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Do you accept your nomination?
I accept, thank you.
Are you supposed to vote?
I actually don't know the answer to that, and I think Zinia did a great job asking if you accept.
Does anyone wish to nominate a vice chair?
I was, go ahead. I was gonna nominate David for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Sounds wonderful to me. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen, do you accept your nomination?
I accept.
And now, since I'm on a roll, I want to nominate Noah for secretary.
Well, I thought since Aaron wasn't here, maybe we should nominate him.
Oh, well, it's up to Noah.
You can be vice secretary.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner, Commissioner Monette?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
Can I, well, I'll ask out for the meeting, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much, that was very efficient.
So...
We're good.
We have a number of items on the agenda, I don't see any additional materials in the binder. Are there any department reports, agenda forecasts?
So, staff has, to take them out of order, staff has essentially deferred the agenda forecast to the project, the planning department project website, so that lists all pending projects and the outcome of recent decisions, so anybody interested in kind of pending items, I would refer them to that site, and if there's questions about timelines of specific projects that are, call staff or send staff an email.
If I could make a suggestion here, then? If we could change the wording on agenda forecast to recognize that change in the boilerplate, I would appreciate it.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Great idea.
Also, could we add, I mean, is it, where is there a time for the members of the commission to maybe bring up things they would like to have on a future agenda? We used to do that, then we didn't do that, and I was wondering if we could do that, and I also wanted to know what's, what will come of my suggestion, our suggestion, oh, you're in your report that we go to a 10-day notification, I mean, what's the next step for that?
I was about to discuss that in department report.
All right, sorry.
But we will, we will modify agenda forecast to, staff is open to allowing suggestions from the commission. Obviously, the city council sets our workload and our priorities, and so just the commission should understand that. However, we are happy to provide an opportunity for the commission to bring up items of interest and then potentially put them on future agendas for discussion.
Thanks.
So, getting to department report, staff is interested in converting our agenda schedule to the 10-day publication period, so thank you for that. I know there's been, it's been well-received from the community, having opportunity to review council items ahead of time. Staff would like to allow the language similar to the council that we endeavor to do that, but just in case something comes up, it allows flexibility to amend agendas, still meeting the three-day legal threshold, but we will essentially use 10 days as our default timeline. And in, in thinking of some of the more complicated matters that the commission reviews, it is appropriate to have more time to do them. We've experienced over the years that I've been here, when very kind of complicated projects are brought to the commission with such a short timeframe, it essentially results in a continuance, because there's just, the volume of information is too significant for commissioners to be able to, to process and get through. So, staff is absolutely open to that. In order to accommodate that, we would like to cancel a meeting. We haven't canceled any meetings this summer yet, and so we were looking at the August 7th date as a potential meeting to cancel, with the intention of converting to the 10-day time period, I'm just checking my calendar, for the August 21st meeting. So, that would essentially allow us an extra week to catch up and then have that heads up, so items for the August 21st agenda would then be published on August 10th.
Does that mirror the council? I know the council often takes a holiday in August. Is that the same time period?
I think theirs is typically in July, and I can't remember, it's the first or second meeting of July they typically cancel.
It's the second one, I think it's gonna be there next week.
So, they, so it's, it would not be something standard. I think last year, 4th of July fell on this date, and so we canceled this meeting in July. I think the year before, we also canceled a meeting in July. We don't have any applications that are looking to that date currently to bring forward, and so it wouldn't disrupt any, any schedules of existing development projects.
Well, there is a 5th Tuesday in August, and so if you needed the 21st to make this change, we could, we could meet on the 28th, and it happens to be my birthday, so I'd assume not, but we could meet on that day, if there was stuff, or...
Well, again, from the staff's perspective, there's not a lot pending for that date, and we haven't committed to getting any items before the commission on that date, so...
Okay, well...
It's a good date to cancel from our perspective, but, but it does require affirmation and a vote from the commission.
Well, if something does come up, then you, we could call a meeting on the 28th, you know...
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Several weeks from between now and then, okay.
Is there a motion? I would entertain one.
I'd like to move to cancel the first week of August.
It's the third week.
First, no, August 7th.
Oh, I thought you said the 21st, oh.
August 7th, okay.
Canceling August 7th.
Sorry.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Would you take the roll, please?
Sorry.
Vice Chair Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Hardy?
Yes.
And then just one other item, so the general plan consultant has, essentially, they're moving forward with finalizing their recommended changes to the general plan document itself. They, in addition to the changes brought forth by the planning commission and then the city council, which were more substantive, the consultants have gone through and are recommending some edits to eliminate some redundancy, also to bring some policies into compliance with state law, and so they are looking for an opportunity to present those changes. Staff is currently trying to figure out the best opportunity for that, and are considering, conceptually, August 14th, which is a city council meeting, so that would be a joint meeting with the city council. The goal would be to try to get those changes before the commission and the council at one meeting to essentially facilitate a streamlined review of those and input versus having to have multiple consecutive meetings. The current budget only accommodates one additional kind of workshop-type meeting, and so that would keep the project within the budget and still facilitate, obviously, public hearings for decisions in the future. And so staff wanted to float that as a potential date. We have not confirmed with the council yet, but the idea would be to hold a workshop three to five or something like that with a break for dinner, and then move into the standard council meeting agenda for that date. I don't need a commitment now, but just if you could consider that, look at your calendars, and then send me an email as to whether that works or not, and I will follow up with an email just to put it before you as a reminder, and I'll do that on Monday. But we do want to get both the commission and the council in a room with the public to allow folks to hear the consultant's recommendations and then get feedback on those, so that way they can finalize the draft, finalize the EIR, and you will recall that we are planning on publishing for the 45-day public comment and review period on the EIR in early fall, so that would streamline it and allow that to happen.
So, we really do have two meetings in August.
You would, you would.
Yeah. The only thing I would say about your schedule is that two hours may not be enough. You might want to add an extra hour in there. I know that's, it's gonna be really hard on the council, and they aren't gonna appreciate it, especially when I'm suggesting we give them another hour in the set of chairs, but there's a great deal of interest in the general plan.
Staff agrees with that. We've kind of been thinking about it internally. What that would also allow is for the consultant and staff to flush out kind of any remaining hot-button topics that need to be brought back, but allow a majority of the recommendations to be decided on, and then we could schedule a secondary meeting at the recommendation of the commission, the council, either to come back to the commission or another joint body, or the council. the council, either to come back to the commission or another joint body or the council. So that is well-recognized but appreciated also.
What would the workshop be? I mean, what's your vision of...
The item is... Or the staff's vision of it is less of a formalized kind of public hearing process and more almost a broad presentation and a discussion from the consultant's perspective as to why each of the changes are proposed, allowing the commission, the council, and the public to kind of mull those over and then agree or ask questions or seek further information. And then again, if we need to bring back to further discuss the justifications for them, that would be scheduled at a different meeting. The changes are not substantive in that there's a lot of redundant policies regarding certain topics, and so they're recommending essentially merging some of the policies into one thing or in certain situations, implementing actions are actually more written as policies and vice versa. So it's kind of reshuffling the language to be more effective in future implementation. You know, these folks, this is what they live and breathe, is general plans and policy documents. And so they just took a lens of kind of long-term use of the document, and they have some recommendations. In addition, the document actually references a number of existing law... Compliance with a number of existing laws as policies, where that kind of goes without saying in some instances, although staff did recommend to keep some of those references in because they are hot-button topics in the community. So just ideas. But you'll... That's generally what it is. It's not any real substantive changes to the policies. It's more streamlining.
But the public will be able to comment.
Absolutely.
So it might be, take a long time, yeah.
And that's the other thing, is we need to get it out to the public and advertise with significant amount of time, so the 10 days would be the minimum, I would imagine. And I have not gotten confirmation from the planning consultants that they can get all that information out in a good, digestible format. And so I'm just right now throwing out that concept and that date, asking you to hold it, and then we'll circle back next week to try to firm it up. We haven't gotten confirmation from the council yet either. So we'll circle back with that, and we will do our best to notify the public. We'll use eNews once that's set, give everybody as much of a heads up as possible. That's it for department report. But just expect the public, the council, and the commission should expect a presentation of proposed changes to the general plan in the coming month to six weeks. And then finalization of the document and full steam ahead with the CEQA public review process.
Former Chair Kissner would be very pleased with the progress, and I'm sure she's watching. So, good job.
Thank you, Director House. I believe this concludes the agenda, and the meeting therefore is adjourned.